We have a book?
I do.
I think he means.
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
Okay, we are live and in color. All right, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we had four items on the special order of business, but at the request of the police chief, we are going to postpone for A, for B, for C. And we will jump right into 4D, which Alderman Valdi asked to have put on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please do roll call.
Thank you, give me a minute to find my statement.
Alderperson Saloga.
Here.
Barrett.
Here.
Valdi.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Grimmer.
Here.
Kassen.
Present.
And Iker.
Here.
And Administrator Hafner.
Here.
And Mayor Atwell.
Present.
All right, now your cue, Jackie.
All right, I did not know I was going so quickly, but it'll just take me a moment to pull it up.
We can come back to if you like.
I'm ready.
Okay.
It just took me a moment. All right, this is just a public statement I asked to be able to make, and so I'm just gonna share it. The morning of November 6th, very early, cell phones in the area blared and unfamiliar sound of lockdown in the area. An active shooter had injured two police officers. Honestly, it felt surreal. My first concerns, how are those officers? Who are they? Will they survive? Our chief, Eric Keel, immediately became the voice of that situation. I caught the chief's interview being questioned while it was still dark outside. Despite the shock of having an officer down and the fluid nature of the situation, I could see our chief listening to the reporter's questions, answering them thoroughly and respectfully and as precisely as possible, and at the same time managing a very fluid and dangerous situation. Direct and measured communication coupled with precise action kept all citizens safe. Happily, the suspect was captured without incident and the injured police officers will recover. This evening, I want to say publicly, thank you. Thank you, Chief Keel, for your calm and intelligent action during a frightening and fluid event. You didn't just manage things, you enabled our police and all law enforcement to do their job and keep the rest of us safe. You did it with the skill, with all the skill we could possibly hope for. I'm sure the whole community feels as I do, that we are blessed by your leadership and grateful to have all of our police officers, and thank them for your actions during such a challenging event. We hope we never see anything like this again, but we take heart in knowing you'll be in charge.
Great, thank you, very nice comments.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will roll into citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments about the items on the agenda? Come on up, Mary, you were first. Just remind everybody, typically when we have a larger crowd, we'd ask you to try to keep to three minutes your comments. We don't have that many people here, we certainly have some online as well, so if everybody stays at that three minutes, we'll keep moving, so it would be appreciated, but if you absolutely have to go to the five, you have the five minutes. And I'll remind you that it's a good thing to reach out to your alderpersons beforehand, and if you're gonna repeat things that other people are saying, maybe just say I'm gonna, I agree with so-and-so type thing, just to try to move us along, be appreciated by everyone here. So, Mary, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Mary Daniel, and I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delafield. I'm gonna speak to the items under new business, which is the 2021 proposed budget. The referendum that passed has provided a Band-Aid for the salaries of city employees only. It does not address other issues. That's why I gave you the Band-Aid. Capital projects being considered this evening are: the boat dock on St. John's Bay for $128,000; repaving the Fish Hatchery Sports Complex parking lot for $82,500; St. John's Park for relocation of the ice rink, $10,000; Veteran Memorial Riverwalk for Plaza entrance, $20,331; Oakwood Drive path, that's from Genesee Street to Hillcrest, $85,000; the Mission Road path for $112,000. These proposed capital projects for 2021 all require maintenance. There is not a cost impact analysis, the actual dollars required for maintenance for any of these projects published. I feel that due diligence is missing. The capital projects I have mentioned are all wants, not needs, in my opinion, and should be put on pause for three to five years. Delafield needs to stop adding capital projects like these, pay down the existing debt, and hope that there will be more tax dollars available in the next three to five years. We have to take care of what we've invested in with prior capital projects. $10,000 plants in the Bark River restoration at St. John's Park need attention this year to ensure that they continue to thrive. What dollars and who will protect that investment we've made? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to be next? Suzie, you were first.
Suzie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. I'm gonna take some things from the budget backwards. The 2007 bucket truck, the diesel, I call it diesel 101 education that Paul Zellner provided, made my eyes glaze over at first when I read it, but it was very important, and I fully support the purchase of a new bucket truck. Going backwards, Mary Daniel brought up the parking lot at Dopkins and Main, which is referred to as the East Parking Lot by the Fish Hatchery. I'd like to know what thickness that is and what we're replacing it with. Drilling into that continually for tent poles and leaving open holes causes water to get into those prior tent poles, stake holes, and fracture that asphalt, and it's worse than that area. So I wanna know what we're going to do if and when, and we do need to replace that parking lot, but what are we going to do to ensure more years' use out of the replaced surface? The last thing on my list, and I am learning to talk more quickly, St. John's pier. It's, Mayor, you mentioned, you put this in as a private citizen, and you mentioned that you made some changes for tonight, but originally that was supposed to be 210-foot in width of a 436-foot opening to St. John's Bay. That is 48% of the width. You are proposing on the next page that it be a smaller pier, and I had sent you a text after the meeting last week, I would personally support a smaller pier at a different location. I do not see having one in St. John's Bay for numerous reasons. Putting a smaller one appears to many people that this would be an opportunity to add on continually. It is a protected area. You refer to DNR offering to pay half of it, but I don't see any documentation on that. We still don't see anything about rules and who's willing to write the rules for how that's going to be placed. Last week, at the meeting, Lake Welfare Management Committee said they didn't want anything to do with writing the rules. This is the third time it's been brought up recently, and I am not seeing anything that shows a recent count of the majority of residents in the city of Delafield supporting it. And I'm talking about something recent, since this issue's been brought up again. So, I know Dr. Seuss says green eggs and ham, if you keep bringing it up and bringing it up in different ways, somebody will agree with it, but in this case, I don't think so.
Thank you for your comments. Steve, do we have anybody online that would just raise their hand?
No, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, Paul? Saw your hand first.
Hello, everybody. My name is Paul Price, my address is 1792 Journeys Drive here in Delafield. I'm also on the Lake Welfare Committee, which met last Wednesday regarding the downtown pier that we were just discussing. The proposal died at a 5-4 vote. I personally voted against it. I did so because of the details that were now available tonight, were not available at that time. The revised proposal, I feel, meets most of the needs and the concerns of the local residents, being no rentals, eliminates the parking issues, the noise issues, and the alcohol issues. The pier can be mounted parallel to shore, which would be only one-third, actually less than one-third of the original length. This would eliminate the issues of being unsightly or ruining the view of the lake from downtown. The DNR will also pay half the cost of non-rental space, which will reduce the cost by 75%. I think originally it was $135,000. After reimbursement from DNR, that would drop to around $25,000, if my math is correct. I think the local residents of the lake have the right to have some access to downtown. This would be five slips for the residents and one slip for St. John's. The type of pier, I'm very familiar with this type of pier, and maintenance issues are almost zero, so it should add very little to the budget of the city after purchase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Scott, come on up.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. House members, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, oh, sorry, Scott Botcher, 704 St. John's Drive, Delafield. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm speaking in opposition to the inclusion of the St. John's Bay Pier project in the fiscal year 2021 capital budget. The proposal, depending on when you ask, keeps morphing, which tells me there isn't really a project plan. The Lake Welfare Committee failed to approve two different proposals. The passage of the $1.3 million referendum purposefully underlevee between 2012 and 2016 has eliminated any alleged financial justification for this proposal. The project does not appear to be a permitted or accessory use according to the City of Delafield zoning code. There has been no independent nor expert traffic analysis. There has been no independent or expert parking analysis. There has been no independent or expert environmental analysis. The DNR permitting process also requires a 30-day public notice period in which any member of the public may request a DNR public information meeting. The unsigned key facts, details, and support clearly asserts that St. John's has no riparian rights. At the Lake Welfare Meeting last week, there were attempts to give St. John's a slip, as was just mentioned, if and when their dock was taken away. There appears to be an assumption that no riparian right exists there. This alleged statement of key fact appears to be untrue and is a potentially significant complicating factor. I have a deed in my possession drafted by former city attorney Bill Chapman, a friend of mine, and filed June 13, 1995, between the Negowica Island Corporation and the City of Delafield, which transfers ownership of much of the property in that vicinity to the City of Delafield. It also reserves to the grantor, the Negowica Island Corporation, the following: reserving to grantor, Negowica Island Corporation, and assigns an easement for use and access to Lake Negowica for the purpose of erecting a pier and all other uses of riparian proprietor, that portion of the southwest corridor, Section 17, blah, 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 blah. This reservation reserves an easement for use and access to Lake Negowica for the purposes of erecting a pier and all other uses of riparian proprietor for Negowica Island Corporation and all assigns. I argue the city does not have the unilateral right to take away this pier, nor would you get a DNR permit if you interfered with Negowica Island Corporation's neighboring riparian rights, which is one of the requirements of the DNR permit. I have seen no evidence that this deed is still controlling, and for these reasons, too many to give them all justice, I strongly request you remove the St. John's Pier project from the fiscal year 2021 capital budget. I have copies of this letter, as well as the reservation of rights for the council to review. I also have been given some documentation of a number of citizens who've reached out, sent me some things, some are useful, some are not. I was given a copy of the Lake Country Reporter, where Stumer accepts the city offer and land purchase, which references the reservation of rights. I have a copy of the minutes to approve the St. John's Park Plan, which includes the easement on the back and the reservation of rights for the Negowica Island Corporation. So, I would argue that even if you wanted to do this project, there's another party involved, and you would not be able to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, who would like to be next? Anybody online? Any other citizens' comments? Yep, come on up.
John Connell, 808 Back Bay. I just would like to go on record as opposing the St. John's Bay Pier project. I've attended all the Lake Welfare meetings on this subject. At the last meeting, there was so much misinformation and design things being kicked around the room, I don't think anybody on that board even knew what they were voting for at the end of the meeting. I did not advance through the meeting, and given the fact that we just had a referendum that increased our taxes, I think going and approving this at this point in time without a solid plan and what Scott just brought to the table is ill-advised and something that should not be supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, who would like to be next? Yep, right there.
Good evening, I'm Susan McVeigh, and I'm at 1711 Negowica Road. I had lived there for about 20 years, and this has come up on and off, the thoughts of doing something like this. I'm now a member of Lake Welfare Committee. I could not make last week's meeting, so I would just like to go on record that I am in favor of the St. John's Bay here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Anybody else? Citizens' comment, Mark?
Good evening, Mark Ballott, as many know, a member of the Public Works and the Lake Welfare Committee. Just regarding the, a few comments regarding the pier for St. John's Bay. I think we need to put this in perspective and realize we're talking about a net increase of five boat slips into the bay. So when we're looking at environmental impacts, traffic studies, parking studies, it's nonsense, to be perfectly honest with you. After thinking about this, and how this project has, how it started, and how it scaled down to a point tonight that you see probably six boat slips, one with St. John's retaining one, we're talking about an influx of five boats into St. John's Bay, which you might see some, a bit of added traffic. This project, and I can reassure you, I appreciate the concerns of, as I mentioned last week at the meeting, of those that are most directly potentially impacted by this, those living in St. John's Bay, and I know Jackie had mentioned there was nearly 100% opposition to it. I had lived for a decade at the mouth of St. John's Bay, and just in talking with the people even on the south end of the lake, I can understand the concerns within St. John's Bay to some extent with the original size of the project, but easily 10 to 15 residents on the south end. We're actually excited about the project, and we're in favor of the project, which, you know, I didn't know which way they were gonna go with it. And I personally, a year ago, or six months ago, had looked at it, and I was not very excited about it either, but the point being is I think at this point, which you're voting on tonight, and the scale of this project, it is a huge asset for that park area, it's a great asset for both any city residents with a boat on the lake during the day, or people living on the lake. The price, for the most part, compared to where it started, has been scaled down to the pack that is reasonably acceptable, nice project. I mean, I, you've got a lot of work to do in terms of budgetary concerns, and five years ago, eight years ago, I was also one that was not excited about the park that currently exists at the end of St. John's Bay. Looking back on it, I was completely wrong. It's a wonderful asset. I mean, every single night, that entire area has just come alive, and it's being used by both City of Delafield residents and others. I think the pier is a great asset. The timing is never right, but I can just reassure you on one thought, that anyone who is telling government to slow down even more, I would, I would just exercise caution and move forward. This is a small project, it's a nice asset to the city, and from a budget standpoint, it is far from strenuous. So, thanks much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, who would like to be next? See a few more people out there. Anybody else like to speak? Oh, come on up. Yeah, there you go. Yep.
My name is Larry Firm, and I live at 2805 Burry's Road, so I'm on the east side. I am very much in favor of this project. Matter of fact, two Saturdays ago, two Saturdays ago, I went up and down Negowica Road, Burry's Road, and Sylvester, to each and every homeowner, lakefront homeowner, and received 50 out of about 52 positive signatures. Every single person, I think, other than two, and the reasons the two didn't sign is because they didn't have a pontoon boat, or a boat that they felt could navigate St. John's Bay properly, so that was pretty much the only objection. This just seems like a very positive thing for the whole city. We know what's going on with Seven Seas right now, so there's a possibility we're gonna lose our only restaurant that you can access by boat, and I can't imagine that the west side of Delafield, and some of the people that don't live on the lake do find a way to get on the lake. I guarantee you, all the council people here who, you know, are representing their constituents have, you know, those people do access the lake, and it's just, wouldn't it be nice to be able to go on the lake and, you know, come in, drive into the slip, and visit and support the downtown businesses? So, we were talking about the cost of this project, I believe it's a capital cost, so $64,000 over 20 years, at what kind of interest rate, you know, 3%, 4%? That's nothing, it's almost, I hate to say it, but it's almost a free project when you look at it that way. And it has been approved by the DNR. This, we're not gonna find out tonight that possibly it isn't, but I was understanding that the pier had been approved.
We can't answer questions, right?
We can't answer some things that I brought up. I think you'll find that it has just universal support around the city. I mean, I think it'd be very hard not to think that it would be by lakefront orders and not lakefront orders, so I received 50 signatures myself, but I understand there's pages and pages I can hand this in of people that we were around, these are all in favor of the St. John's Bay. So I think it would be, even in your territory, even the, again, the westsiders here, I would like to think that the people you represent would be very much for it, because they would be using it one way or another. Thank you.
I can just give that to the clerk. Okay, who'd like to be next? Any other comments? Okay, come on up from the back.
And Bill Stru, 800 Back Bay. Wife and I have been here about seven years now, and attractiveness of this lake has always been aesthetics as well. And we are totally against this project. This marina, no matter how big or small it is, will affect the aesthetics of this bay, as well as this entire lake. And I want you to do something, I want you to think about that. Even though you don't live there, we do. And we know what kind of impact it can have on us. I appreciate if you would take this out of the budget for this next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? I think we got at least a couple more. Anybody else? Seeing none. Citizens' comments are now, before I do that, anybody online, raise their hand? Okay. See, oh.
Yeah, there is. I can see Sandy from here, Sandy Felker.
Oh, well, if I raised your hand, Sandy, I meant on Zoom, I didn't see you.
She actually raised her hand and her mic is not on. There.
Hi, am I here?
You're here.
You're here.
Hey, perfect. I've been trying to chat and raise my hand and all sorts of different things on Zoom, and it was not allowing me to do anything.
I'm glad we got you.
Thank you. Okay, so my name is Sandra Felker, I live at 2420 Negowica Road. I guess my comments tonight are really just on our capital budgets. I would really like to see us include in our capital budget spending, just an understanding of what this is going to do to our operational budget going forward. Many people I know, Doug, I saw you go running past the damage that was done on the front of the road on Negowica Road this morning. So, a lot of us in the neighborhood saw an Amazon truck mistook the path last night for the road, and got stuck in the new part of the seed that was being planted just last week. So I mean, I think that what this type of thing shows us is that there are operational expenses that come along with new capital projects, and some of them are unforeseen, and some of them are things that we are going to know that are coming. It was pretty clear to me that a lot of the things that were set to be cut, should our referendum have not been passed, were things that we were more recently investing in, such as the paths. We were saying that we were not going to be able to afford to do the snow plowing for those. We were going to cut the ice rink. I see that we have moved the ice rink as one of the things that we are now going to propose to do in this capital budget. And if these are things that we are not able to afford without a referendum, I think they're really things we should be considering whether we should be spending capital money on them right now, until we have a clearer picture of what our long-term fiscal responsible solution is going to be for the city. So, I really do encourage us to start thinking about those operational expenses alongside of the capital expenses, and projecting out what those are going to be. So, thank you for your time. Good luck tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Is there anyone else online that would like to flicker, raise your hand, chat? See anything, Steve?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else in here? All right, citizens' comments are now closed. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, 6A.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? All right, we will move on to 7A. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. November 1, 2020, Commission Report by Mayor Atwell. Okay, there was no meeting, so we'll skip that one. Or if there, if I'm missing it, and there was a meeting, then I'd refer you to the minutes, because I did not have a chance to look them over. Okay? C, Lake, or I'm sorry, B, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
Yes, good evening. The largest thing that was taking, that was addressed at the Lake Welfare Meeting was, of course, the pier that is being discussed this evening. It was brought up after citizens' comments, actually after Kent had added some more information that he provided, and then there was some citizens' comments as well, and it was voted on twice. Both of them, both of the endorsements were declined by a 5 to 4 margin by the committee. on twice. Both of them, both of the endorsements were declined by a 5 to 4 margin by the committee. And I think that will be taken up later as well tonight. So that's the gist of the meeting.
Great, thank you, Phil. Okay, we will move on to C, Library Board. Jackie?
All right, Library Board.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, you answered.
Just a second.
Alderman Grimmer has his hand up. I'm not sure.
Oh.
Yeah, let, yeah, bring him in.
Can I speak?
I asked him to unmute. There he is.
Can you hear me? I just needed you to unmute me, Steve.
Oh, okay, got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, back to you, Jackie.
All right. Okay, we met on November 10, the Library Board, and there are a few things I'd like to mention. Three different programs or services to highlight. The first two were created to help with our limited browsing. And the third existed before, but we have expanded due to COVID. Two really cool things that have gotten a ton of positive feedback are kids' book bundles. Experienced youth services staff like to help people find great books for your kids. All you have to do is go to the website, fill out a short form with your child's preferences, and within 24 hours, they'll check out a bundle of either pre-assembled or customized bundles for you to pick up with your family. And they've now expanded that to adults. So they have adult book boxes, same kind of thing as for kids, but for adults. So if you, and I have a terrible time picking out books, so I love this, you can get reading recommendations for things that you're interested in. And for a limited time, I sound like a TV commercial, every request comes with a box of goodies. Light goodies. They also have something that I think is really neat for people who are homebound. Home delivery. The Delafield Library have staff members who will deliver books to your home. The materials will be delivered to any patron living within the Delafield Public Library service area. To get started and see all the rules and policies, visit our website. The library has been providing teen self-care kits that have become very popular. They'll put together a kit for a teen in your life through the end of November. So contact the library or email them. And finally, a week from tomorrow is Culvers Cares Night. They've rekindled them. You can use the drive-through. It benefits, the money they make between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. are donated to the friends of the Delafield Public Library. So you can visit Culvers in Wales on the 24th between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. to benefit our library. And it's just two days before Thanksgiving. Who wants to cook, anyway? All right, that's it. Our next meeting is December, I wrote it here somewhere. I can tell you. I think it's the 8th. Yep, December 8, at 6:30 on Zoom.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to D, Promotion and Tourism. Mr. Barron's.
Yes, I wasn't at the meeting, but I can report. The most significant thing is Deb Smith put together an application for funding from COVID relief, and the city has received a grant of about $50,000, which will be used to offset a lot of the costs we incurred this year that weren't covered by the revenues. So we know how much that helps us, because that's had a huge impact on the, on the financials for the city. So.
Great. Here's a great number. Thank you. Thank you, Deb, for applying for it, and the commission for helping her do that. Okay, we will move on to number 8, Mayor's Report. Just wanted to first speak to the incident that we had two Fridays ago. And, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, the whole city, you know, thanks, the officers and the Police Department of Delafield, as well as the Village of Heartland and their Police Department, and all the other agencies that came in to participate to ultimately capture the gentleman, if you want to call him that, who came into the city and, you know, wreaked some havoc on all of us, and how disappointing. Have talked with the Village President, Jeff Fannerstill, and I communicated my sincere thank you to him and his community for supporting us. And he actually, he also said the same thing, that he was reaching out and thanking the City of Delafield and its board by himself and, and his village board. I want to remind everyone that on December 6, at Well Street Tavern, there is a fundraiser for the two officers. If you've not seen that online, it's being run by the City of Delafield Chamber of Commerce. It does go to support both officers and their needs after the incident. If, if you have something to donate, please reach out to the chamber. Or if you'd like to be a participant in the event and bid on the items that are donated, please, please do so. Also, the Village of Heartland, and my discussions with Jeff, I believe it was, if I understood him correctly, it was his idea to come up with the blue ribbons throughout Village of Heartland, if you've noticed those. And the chamber is doing a similar thing here in the City of Delafield, and I don't, haven't noticed if they've started to go up, but they will be going up very soon. So just another way that citizens and the city can appreciate and thank our officers for all that they do, not just on that day, but every day. Okay, so then we'll move on to 81, Appointment by the Mayor of Jack Dembski. As a member of the City of Delafield Public Works Committee, the two-year term would expire 2021.
I'll move to approve Jack Dembski, Dembski for Public Works.
I will second that.
Great. Any discussion?
No, I'm just glad to have him aboard. I met him a couple of years ago.
Did you? Yeah, he's in, he's from your district, a nice young man.
Yeah.
Very nice young man.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I urge him to get involved.
Yeah, yeah. I, I met him three years ago, when he hadn't even moved into his house, and I was knocking on doors, and he was putting in his mailbox, because he couldn't get an occupancy until he could put in his mailbox. And it was like February 10, and we're both out there freezing. And he actually, you know, chatted with me, and he was just, I've kept an eye on him ever since. So I'm glad we found a spot for him.
Yeah, me too.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Okay. Now we'll move on to number 9, New Business. A, Proposal to 21 City of Delafield Operating Capital Budgets, which we've all been waiting for. As far as the citizens' comment that was made, I'm just going to pass around some copies of the, over 150 signatures in support of the pier that were gotten in the last week or two. Just, I only have two copies. You can share them or whatever, just so you can know that they exist.
So what are we doing first, operating or capital?
That's really up to the common council to decide. We've traditionally taken them separately. Sometimes we take one first, and sometimes we take the other. So you guys decide. We typically start out with a motion approving one or the other. And then, once there's a second to that motion, then we add amendments, and each of those amendments are voted on individually. And at the end of the amendments, we close the original motion with a vote on that. And our finance officer, Amy Buckman, is here to keep track of your amendments in real time. And so then it'd be up to you on where we, where you'd like to start.
Mr. Mayor, can I mention something?
Sure.
Alderman Kassen just messaged me. You can hear everyone on this side pretty, pretty well, just everyone over there. Make sure you speak into the mic and kind of speak on a slower level. So everything's captured in here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those online, please monitor that for us. And if it's not working out, just please chat in to the, to Steve and let him know. And we'll keep asking to help make sure you can hear.
Would anyone object to starting with the capital budget?
I have no problem with that.
Great. I'm going to make a motion to defer St. John's Park in the amount of $10,000 to 2022. This is the relocation of the ice skating rink. So Park and Rec is still vetting this project, looking into alternatives. And so, also given the fiscal climate, I appreciate that capital expenditures are very different than operating expenditures. We have historically low borrowing costs right now, but at the same time, there's some indecision on where to, to put this ice skating rink from Park and Rec. And so I'd like to defer for a year.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I, I agree with the motion, but this is one project where I think they're motivated to try and reduce costs, because it's closer to the DPW shop, if I recall.
Yeah. And Matt, please, if I, if you and I are just, have a misunderstanding somewhere along the line here, let me know. But in going on the park walk, the discussion was, you know, hopefully moving it to downtown to have it better utilized, to be able to have, you know, the, the hours that we do expend from Public Works Department to be less than what they are when they have to travel to the other side of the city in Oakwood. So if we do defer this to next year, then the opportunity to reduce our costs next year potentially could also go away. So just a comment.
I think though, that we don't know where we want to put it. If the last discussion that I heard, there was some consternation about placing it on top of a bunch of perennials. And then there was a discussion about maybe putting it, you know, so it seems like that hasn't been determined.
Yeah. So I mean, I would say that, and Matt, am I over speaking you? Because I don't want to. Can we hear?
I'm sorry. Yep, I can, I can make out, between the mass and the audio, it's always, it's always hard to hear a little bit.
Okay.
I guess, you know, on the, the Genesee St. John's Park, the issues that came up in Park and Rec are parking. And the alternatives being debated are the soccer field. But one of the other alternatives that may, may be palatable to the council and to Park and Rec, may be placing it in Liberty Park. Liberty Park allows proximity to downtown. It's obviously on the Bark River, which has, you know, and, and has ample parking as well. And so the advantage of Liberty Park is, you know, that ample parking, a beautiful setting right by the Bark River, and right next to downtown. So that's the direction that I'd like to move in. But Park and Rec still wants to kick this around a little bit more.
And just for clarification, Mr. Barron.
Yeah.
The $10,000 would be for grading cost. If we, if we take the $10,000 out, we still have the opportunity to have a skating rink, leaving it at Oakwood Park.
That's correct.
Or no cost to put it like at Liberty Park without any grading. So I just want to make sure people understand that. We're not saying we wouldn't have the, we wouldn't have it. It's to spend the $10,000 for grading to put it there, okay?
Yeah, so I'm totally on the same page with you, Wayne. I, I would say, I, only thing I would say is I wouldn't assume that Liberty Park or another location might not also require some grading. It does need to be pretty flat. So it, it may need it over there, too. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
The motion, one second.
Am I heard?
Remove it from the.
Am I heard? This is Phil Kassen. Am I heard?
Yep.
Okay, just checking. I'd like to echo that I think it's, we need to be as responsible as possible here. And while $10,000 might not seem like much for an investment for the community, when there's ways to do it at less cost, and not just less installation cost, but less operating cost. And chatting with Paul Zellner at DPW, moving it over from Oakwood Park is a savings, because they don't have to be driving to the other side of the lake. Plus, if they have clear access to the water, whether it's a hydrant or the river, I think is a great idea. It's cheaper to do. But having to excavate the park and level that and change the work that has just been done, I think the park benefits from having that wildlife on the north end there. So removing that is a detriment, not to mention I really like Matt, Alderman Grimmer's idea of looking at other alternatives. I do not believe those have been explored significantly enough. So I know I would be in favor of removing that $10,000 from the budget as well.
Sounds great. Okay, is there any other discussion?
I'm curious. So does that mean that the skating rink remains on Oakwood Drive near 83 for 2021?
Or somewhere else that doesn't cost $10,000?
The skating rink was going to remain at Oakwood Park, no matter what you did tonight, for this winter. If you approve this project, that grading would be done this coming summer, in time to move the ice skating rink for next winter.
Roger, okay.
Gotcha.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Great.
As long as we're over in that area, I'd like to have a discussion on the Veterans Memorial Park Plaza entrance there for, I think it was $21,331. Can, Tom, can you, somebody give me a little bit more, am I clear? They're trying to put another entrance, a bigger entrance at the parking lot there, as a bridge as it goes across? Is that where the entrance would be?
Yeah, just increasing the size of the entrance area there. It encumbers, I think, about five of the parking spots there to make the plaza entrance larger.
Now, with all the other things going on, I'd, I'd make the motion to remove that $21,331 from the budget.
Is there a second?
Actually, let me just clarify, $20,331?
I second the motion.
$20,331, yeah.
Yeah, Veterans Riverwalk, 20331. And Phil seconded.
Kevin, second motion, if not done?
No, we have a motion and a second. So now we're in the discussion. So I'll throw out my discussion. I, I completely support this one as well. I've been on the park walk. This has been talked about two or three years. And I don't, we, we need the parking that we have over there. And I, I'm not really sure what the benefit of making a larger entrance area is to that bridge. I think it functions very well right now. And I, I, when I've been on the park walk, there's, you know, a couple people that think it's a good idea, but I just don't hear much discussion on it other than, than that. And I, I just don't see how, I don't, I don't see how that makes a lot of sense to do that one myself.
I would concur with that. This is Alderman Kassen. And I think any modification there should be part of a larger comprehensive plan for the development of Liberty Park, if at all. A larger plaza there would certainly draw people's attention to it, but I think at this point, that would be a nicety. And as I said, should be delayed until any further Liberty Park plans are made. So I, I would also agree with withdrawing this from the budget.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay.
While I'm on a roll, can I go another one?
Go ahead.
Just one left.
You can.
I'm waiting for the mayor.
Yeah, there is no.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I go ahead with another?
Oh, yeah, sure. First come, first served.
Bottom of page, 111, the More Bark Brush Chipper. Hey, Tom, can you, is it a point the one we have now that we have to replace it? Is it broken down? Have we looked into how often we use it? Whether even rental every once in a while would be worthwhile? It just seems like that's a huge expense, and I just want a little bit more background.
Yeah, it gets used extensively. Rental would not be an appropriate solution for that. It's used, you know, close to daily throughout the entire summer, spring, spring, summer, and fall. It is, it has been kept longer than the typical useful life for that piece of equipment. It's, it's still functioning, but we've identified that now would be the most efficient time to get rid of it, considering the salvage value that we could still get for the piece of equipment.
But it just be, though, though it has gone through what typically would be your useful period of time, it's still operational. It's still working.
It is still working.
Well, I'd like to move to take that out of the budget, and move it to the next year. Move it to 2022.
Hey, Tom, Tom Hafner?
Yes.
What would, if we removed it, and it broke in June, what would be our recourse?
We would have to fix it.
Or do, or do spot rentals, right? Or you couldn't, it's a continuous.
It's used a lot.
It's used day in and day out.
All right. And that's, and we get spikes with storms. Or do we just, is it, is it a result of storms and that, that we just have an accumulation of debris that we just get to, we go through chipping as we get rid of that stuff?
With Emerald Ash Bor, we're significantly behind on tree work. With Emerald Ash Borer, we're significantly behind on tree work, we've got pages and pages of backlog, and we're constantly doing tree work, and that's used to chip the trees that we take down.
That's a really good point.
We have a motion, but we have no second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was no second.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, the first person to speak is an assumed second, so I have Alderman Grimmer. Because a second means that you're wanting to discuss, and you're already discussing.
Good call.
I will second for discussion purposes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, there you go.
So this is for a brand new chipper?
Yeah, just reviewing the information that you have in your packets, the average life, according to the Wisconsin DOT, of a brush chipper is classified as eight years. This chipper's been used for 13 years.
So I, we're selling our chipper, I imagine, to other municipalities. Is there a market, and this is just my take, for purchasing one with four years of useful life used and getting, you know, taking one without depreciation for, say, half the cost? Is that really for any of these capital purchases, is that an option, or?
Well, I mean, first of all, the people that typically buy this is not other municipalities, it's typically small contractors that are just getting started, that need inexpensive equipment, and the city has access to government pricing, where buying a new piece of equipment is oftentimes under our available pricing, about the same as buying a used piece of equipment that might have a few years on it.
I support, I don't support the motion. I think we're really a forestry department here, and this is a key thing that our laborers are working on, and I think we should, we should have equipment that's reliable.
And let me just add that if this motion were to pass, there is $25,000 of revenue from the sale of the chipper in the operating budget that would need to get removed.
So I have a question about that. Is there, I mean, I don't want to be in the situation where we might be overshooting what we're going to get on some of these things, and we, is that, I don't know, where do we get that price from? I'm not saying it's, are we being optimistic, or are we being realistic?
So I've been with the city since 2003, been with the city for 17 years, and there's been one and only one time where we overestimated what we would get from a piece of equipment, and that was a fire truck.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Which our crew does not have good experience in. This is based on extensive review of auction results from similar equipment in the last year or two.
Okay, gotcha, fair enough.
Okay, any other discussion, folks?
Tom, did you say it's used daily over the summer? Did I hear you right?
Yeah, spring, spring through, fall, used daily, and then still use probably, probably close to half the days throughout winter, because we continue to do a lot of tree work during the winter when we're now plowing.
And are we behind on tree work? Did I hear that as well?
At least a year.
Absolutely, significantly behind on tree work.
So basically, we're spending $70,000, we're going to get $25,000 back. That's a pretty good price to have good equipment.
But still a lot of money, no doubt.
Agreed.
No doubt, but yeah, I'm inclined to agree to purchase it, I just think we need to have proper equipment that works, and yeah, that's all I got to say.
Okay, is there any?
So the motion is to take it out of the budget?
Take it out of the budget, correct. Okay, one more time, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion fails.
Okay, and I want to have the same type of discussion about the 52-inch Toro commercial stand on mower. Give me some more background on why we need that. This is on the top of page 112.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, as described on page 156, as far as the equipment, piece of equipment has a five-year life, according to DOT. We've used it for seven years. This is primarily used in the cemetery, and again, it's a $9,000 piece of equipment. We've identified this as the ideal time to sell it with regards to expected repairs and maintenance, breakdowns and whatnot, and we've got a salvage value of $4,500 that we expect to get from the old piece of equipment. So again, $9,000 cost, if we do remove that, we would need to remove $4,500 out of the operating budget and revenue.
No motion for me, I just want to get more clarification, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you.
Just so you know, our department, we keep a 20-year schedule on the equipment, and Paul is constantly analyzing the equipment, and it's very often that we've got a piece of equipment that we originally assigned a 10-year useful life, and two or three times we'll push it back a year just because, you know, it's working very well and things like that. When it starts, when the equipment starts to have some hiccups and things like that, and concerns develop that we're, you know, getting near significant maintenance, that's when our guys identify or recommend replacement.
That's a good practice, because, I mean, you're costing yourself labor hours if you got people out there dedicated to do a job, and then the equipment fails and they end up wasting that time, right? I mean, it's important that you have equipment that you have confidence in, but being reasonable, not selling something just because it reached the timeline. It's, if we're, I believe we're doing what Tom says, and we're scrutinizing it, as I've watched them do for many years, so.
Well, compliments to the Public Works, and for them to maintain the equipment that we can actually get 50% extra life out of it from its useful value.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's good use.
Agreed, I second that.
I don't know if there's a motion.
I'm going to jump in, since everybody's so quiet, I'm going to jump on page 111, top of the page. I have never had, in my, this is my eighth year on the common council, I've never had 100% vociferous, strong, and a huge number, every single person who lives along the bay, without fail, has been against this St. John's pier. My concerns are multiple, not the least of which is the lack of depth of water, the churning of the water, even with pontoon boats. I see it, because I'm on the, I launch my kayak and our family boat off of the Bleeker Street boat launch regularly, weekly. It wasn't nearly 100% against, it was 100% against every single person, north and south on the bay. My concern is even if there were 55 or 155 people who supported it, they were not the stakeholders who actually lived on the bay. The people who live on the bay are absolutely beside themselves, being unsupportive of it, and I don't support it because it's a ton of money, and I think it's inappropriate to the space. The use, any grant money, is just, the ride's not worth the fare on this one. I really believe that anything worth doing is worth doing well, and this is being changed in the middle of the proposal. It was not recommended twice by Lake Welfare, and it is not welcomed by the people who are directly impacted by the proposal. So while others along, you know, the north or west side of the lake would love to motor in, I don't blame them for that, but the people who will actually have that boat traffic and the noise, six or 13, it's, the ride's not worth the fare. So I'm making a motion to remove the St. John Bay's public boat dock for boat access to downtown at the tune of $128,000.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, if I can catch up here just a moment, is there currently a motion on the floor, or, I didn't hear one to the mower, correct?
To remove the St. John Bay's pier.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to remove it from the budget?
Yes, I just made that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I would also like to reiterate the request to pull that out of the budget. There's numerous reasons. I think the initial reason it was suggested was to try and get non-lake residents on the lake. That was going to be balanced with trying to provide recreational access for lakegoers to the downtown area. I don't believe that the people on the lake now will be able to actually contribute that much to the downtown community, the businesses, and in fact, the non-lake goers have been removed from this boating, from this pier, so consequently, half of the goal has already been removed from this suggestion. Of more importance than any money that boaters might bring to the downtown area, I think is the importance of the fishing that's drawn to the entirety of the lake, and if this happens to be the spawning area, the important area that the DNR has identified, after having talked with a biologist, he'd informed me that actually, propellers probably would stir up the water enough so that silt deposition would not happen, so that dredging probably would not be needed. But why? Because it would actually cause damage to the actual spawning area, it would actually cause the oxygen water, the oxygen level of the waters to decline. As it is, the DNR only allows us limited amount of the summer to even cut the weeds that are in there. We would artificially be doing that, we would be reducing the weeds, reducing the fish and the spawning, which are not only good for the lake, but also downstream and the rest of the river, I think that's not talked about enough either. I also find it interesting that some of the details that maybe need to be looked into more regarding St. John's, if one slip would have to be given to St. John's as an easement, we're down to five, and I think there's even another boat that has been used in conjunction with St. John's, so there might be two slips that would be used up. I cannot support this, I know the people in this side of the district, at least who have talked with me, are not in favor of it. I think this really is, doesn't serve enough people, considering the compromise that it places on the vast majority. Yes, it would be nice for some people to be able to boat up, but I think the inconvenience, the aesthetic issues, the economic issues, the practicality of it, just for the people on the south end of the lake in St. John's and off the lake, that's just too great. I don't think this is worth it.
Okay, I'd like to go next, thank you, Phil. You know, I just wrote down some notes here, and I'm just going to kind of go through them as quickly as I can, you know. Why is this in the capital budget, right? I'm proposing this in the capital budget because, you know, I made a commitment to citizens to only work on projects that they supported. So we did a survey as part of the comprehensive plan update when I first became mayor, and one of the questions asked was, what I'm holding up here, was a survey question that said, citizens on and off the lake support community pier in St. John's Bay, and the question was, should the city pursue a community pier in St. John's Bay to provide water access to downtown? And the results were 60% agree, 22% were neutral, and 17% were disagree. So, I mean, that's the impetus for why that's on there, one of them. The second one is that there's very strong support from lake residents. Signatures were turned in from those folks, over 150 of them, and as was stated by one of the individuals that went around to collect those signatures, they could have gotten twice that number, maybe even more. It wasn't a matter of whether people on the lake, if you left the area closest to St. John's were for it. Virtually every person that was home that they talked to supported it. So 95% of the people signed the petition. You know, the DNR has offered a 50% matching grant for this project, which we have an email on, that it meets their criteria, and also, this isn't something new, right? This is something that's been in the 1993 Downtown Development Plan, right? This was in the budget for discussion last year in the capital budget. There's been a number of meetings at the Lake Welfare Committee where folks have been able to participate, and that's what the process is for, so we can hear the concerns and then address them, right? And address them with the best information that we have. On durability and maintenance on the operating budget, you know, the Gator docks are good quality products used in similar and more demanding applications. Our marine-grade aluminum have a useful life of decades and require little to no maintenance. They're being, it being a design where it's a floating pier, they're left in the water year-round, so you're not going to experience what most lake folks are familiar with, with taking your pier in and out, which is an expensive process, and there'll be very little ongoing maintenance that's required for this, other than, you know, the occasional bent support pole, which is a nominal cost that might need replaced. Navigability, you know, this is a topic that a lot of people have brought up, and it's an important topic. You know, the DNR guideline for navigability is minimum of 36 inches of water. That's their definition in their own brochures, and at the Lake Welfare Committee, and in your E-Packet tonight, is a, you know, manual survey that was completed that shows that we have the required 36 inches of depth from the St. John's, from the Bleaker Street, where we already have the traffic, down to the location of the proposed pier. And the hard bottom is definitely deeper, but there's the required amount of water. So, and just, some people have made comments about plants and sediment, and that's true if you go all the way to the fishing pier, where people today go to and attempt to tie up their boats. Countless number of people tie up to that fishing pier, which is designed not to allow boats, and crawl over top of it. So having a pier like that will keep them out of that area. This pier is using a center route path, and again, you know, no dredging would be required. This is also something that's brought up, it's citizens' comments. I mean, dredging wouldn't be allowed in the first place in St. John's Bay, but the navigability exists, no dredging would be required. This proposal, you know, would follow the rules set forth in the DNR's own pier planner and guidelines, and this is, this was, you know, checked into by SEH. So what does that mean? I mean, what is the pier planner? The pier planner is what every person, resident, property owner that lives on the lake has to follow to be able to put a pier on their property. We're following the same guidelines for the installation of this pier as the immediate private property right next to us. We're following the same rules that they're being asked to follow. You know, one can argue, why would the city be treated any different than the neighbor right next door, based on our frontage? So this isn't an unusual request. If somebody had as much frontage as we had in front of their property, they could simply put in this pier, and we wouldn't have anything to say about it, it would be allowed.
So if I may, I can say?
Yep, let me just finish up here, Phil, and then I'll let you have at it. Again, it's the same rules. I would strongly suggest that any motion to approve, you know, list the following requirements based on the comments raised by the neighbors during the multiple meetings and attendance, and some very good comments were made. You know, the original proposal was always up to 13 slips for boats, and with the citizens' input, bringing it down to six, and having one for St. John's, I agree with some folks that made comments, that that seems like a very reasonable size, and it complies with the pier planning guidelines. So I would certainly downsize the pier in any motion and say no more than six pontoon slips, and not to exceed 150 feet in length. And this pier is modular, so one of the folks that spoke said that you could reorient it so that it wouldn't stick out so far in the lake and be more parallel to the property. Absolutely can be done, easy fix, easy change, not an issue, would blend in more with the landscape. So it addresses the aesthetic issues that were brought up. I would not, I would ask that any motion not include any rental slips.
There's already a motion.
Yeah, if this one were to fail, right, I'm just going through it. Would not allow any rental slips or overhead lighting, operate under current St. John's Parks rules, be contingent upon a 50% grant match from the DNR, and not to exceed $30,000. I raised it up a little bit from the document just to have some kind of contingency in there. And then the last thing I would say is with regard to the good comment, which was nice information to have, I don't, I was not aware of the information that was brought forward with regard to St. John's easement, that wasn't something SEH had pulled out in their investigation. But again, the intent originally and remains that they would still have their easement, they would still have their access, they would, and they would still have a spot to keep the boat that they keep there now. So this proposal would help ensure that we honor that agreement that, in my opinion, that was brought up, which is an important thing to make sure we do. All right, Phil? All right, Phil?
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, the DNR indicated has given a grant or has said they would?
No, Tom Hafner, well, let me just tell you what I have, right? So Tom Hafner reached out to the DNR and asked them if this is something that they would consider approving through a pier grant program. And I don't know if I have the email right here in front of me to read it to you verbatim, but the DNR person responded and said that, you know, as a fishing pier or some other definition, they would not be able to approve grant money for that. But based on the configuration being for public use, they also disqualified any areas that would be rented. So if there was a renting component, that part would not qualify for the 50%.
Okay.
But the other part, as basically proposed, would be that it would qualify for their grant program.
Okay. My question was going to be if the person at the DNR that said the grant would probably be available, if that is the same person that is actually the one that would permit the actual pier? I'm inclined to think they're two separate people, two separate departments?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, and I'm glad you brought that up, you know. So basically, you know, obviously, if this project were approved, we would make sure that we would spend additional operating budget money trying to do, you know, there's this debate about how much money you spend before something actually becomes a project or not. You know, the city's gone both ways on it. My preference is not to spend a lot of money upfront on something in fear that it might not get approved, and that's tens of thousands of dollars wasted for something that never moved forward. So there is a balancing act there. But to answer your question about, you know, the different parts of the DNR, you know, we are complying with their own regulations as it relates to the pier planner, right? And the person that we talked to that saw the design said that it was something, it was described to them, that as described, that that would be something that would qualify for it. So when we would have those discussions, which we absolutely would with any other entity of the DNR that would be interested in having those discussions, that would be the baseline for what our position would be, that we're complying with your pier guidelines, we understand that we qualify for a 50% grant based on our design, and why would you treat us any differently than you would the neighbor right next door?
But they could.
There's a possibility, sure.
So I want to get clear. We don't have 100% approval from the DNR, to put it there, and we don't have 100% commitment that they're going to give us the grant. We might qualify, or they would consider, but we do not have commitment from the DNR that they would definitely give us half the money for it.
Tom, you want to answer that, please?
Yeah, first of all, we have not had any discussions about the permitting with the DNR yet. Like Ken said, the direction to staff was wait to see if the council approves the project in the first place, and then we would talk to them about permitting. With regards to the grant funding, obviously, there's no commitment. We didn't apply. They're not going to commit to anything until we apply. But this is traditionally a very well-funded program. It's the recreational boating facilities program. And I would say it is highly likely that we would receive 50% funding for this project. Worst-case scenario sometimes is they have a glut of projects in a particular year, and sometimes some of the projects need to wait a year before they get funding. But traditionally, it's been very well-funded, and I would expect that we would very likely get funding for this project.
So does grant money get approved based on your request to say, "Hey, we're thinking about this, will you give us 30 grand?" Or does it get approved based on you saying, "We've got a commitment to spend 60, will you spend 50% matching?"
So they'll want from the city, a resolution committing to the matching funds. However, if by chance you guys approve the project, we apply for a grant, we get approved, we commit to the matching funds, it's never too late until after you construct the project to, you could always, you know, pull out if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm asking if they grant approval before you've got an approved budget item. Does it have to be in a capital budget, or can it be a resolution based on the grant application?
They're just gonna want a resolution from the council that you're committing to paying the matching funds as part of the application.
And so that type of application could happen in May or March, or when we do the, I mean, that kind of resolution?
Yeah, this program takes applications quarterly. They get their initial amount of money from the state, I believe in June, so that's the best time to apply. That's when they're fully funded. And then throughout the four quarters of the year, they keep spending down what they add. So the worst time to apply is for their February approvals.
Okay, all right.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to throw one more thing, and it's a bit of semantics, but I just wanted to share it with you. You know, the vote at the Lake Welfare Committee was tied 5-5. I'm not sure where the 5-4 comes from, but it was tied 5-5. There were 10 people in attendance, and the one missing, the 11th Lake Welfare Committee person, did come and give testimony tonight that they were in favor of it. So if it were revoted again, it would pass the Lake Welfare Committee.
I'll go semantics with you then, Kent. There isn't a single person who signed this who lives on the bay, not one. So when you talk about strong lakefront property owners who support this pier, none of them are the people who will endure the pier in their front or backyards, however you want to look at it. So that's a bit misleading in and of it.
I'm not trying to be misleading at all.
Well, it came across that way. If you didn't intend it to be, then I'm glad, but it just, when you say it's strong lake property support, you're right, except you forgot to mention that none of the people who would have the pier in their living room window supported, none of them, not one.
And I totally agree that the people that are very close to it are most of the people that have come and talked, and they're concerned about it. I would be too. I mean, I have a weed harvester that's one door down from me. I get it, trust me. I get it.
But it isn't there permanently. It's there, especially up on the north end of the bay. It's only there during certain parts of the bay, and on the weekend, it's parked over by the Bleecker Street Boat Launch. It is moved so it doesn't bother the aesthetic of the folks who live up there. But that pier is there all the time. And what bothers me the most is that this is being presented as a very strongly supported by lake community and all the good things and all the money we're gonna get. But this is emblematic of the smaller proposal on West Shore Drive. None of the stakeholders were involved in the discussion. None of the people on the bay were involved in the talk about this pier. At least, none of this presentation brings that up, and I just Google mapped a few of these addresses. None of them are on the bay.
No, no. I mean, I'm just trying to be helpful here. I mean, I will tell you, there weren't, didn't have enough people to get all the way around the lake.
Well, all you have to do is walk down Mill Street. I could have walked down Mill Street.
And with that said, though, I mean... And we did have somebody who lives on the south side of the lake, who said that he had spoke to, you know, I understand his conjecture, I'm just repeating it to be helpful. And, you know, he lives on the south side of the lake in your district, and he said, I don't want to misquote him, but virtually every person that he talked to was in favor of it.
I can give you addresses and emails if you would like me to do them.
No, I don't disagree. I've seen some of the emails too. I'm just trying to say that there's a large percentage of the lake residents that are clearly in support of this, that the people that went and collected the signatures, 95-plus percent of the people they talked to were in favor.
Right.
The only reason it didn't have more signatures were two, right? I'm not saying it would have included the near people in St. John's Bay, is that they just didn't have the time to knock on the doors, and we didn't have the manpower to do it.
Okay. But you're missing my point. My point is, the number one place you should have gone first before you went to folks on the northwest edge of the lake, were the people whose living room windows would be looking at that pier. That's the problem. Not that you don't have time, but you didn't take the time to go to the stakeholders and the people who were immediately impacted by this decision.
Yeah, I get your point. I'm hearing what you're saying.
I'm not sure you do.
And there's a public process for that, which we used for the Lake Welfare Committee, where the residents that were there came to multiple meetings and shared their input on the project, and they emailed you. I think, you know, there's, I don't know that there's a perfect process, but this process certainly made them aware of what was being considered. And they clearly stated their concerns, and I'm glad they did, because the project was altered to try to accommodate as many of them as we could.
Okay, well...
Well, I...
I'd like to add to Alderman Jackie's comments. I appreciate Jackie thinking about my constituents looking out the window at this, but actually, I think that far more people, this is the living room window for far more people than just the people on the bay. If there was a pier there, it would have to follow park rules, would have to close at nine. I can't foresee that happening. People coming from downtown going back to their boats at 10:00 or 11:00 perhaps, or people coming in at nine, that would be a problem. And at those hours, it would have to be illuminated. And not only would people have to look at this just for visiting, anybody that comes to visit the downtown area pretty much goes to that park. It's a beautiful development for the whole city and for non-residents alike. To have that developed and have that there, to have additional lighting in the evening, I know that's not currently on the agenda to have lighting there, but you can't have people out there on a city pier 10 o'clock on a night without illuminated. And that distracts from the whole idea of that quiet, calm day. So I think the picture window that you're referring to, Jackie, is thousands of people. And I think this comes down to, it's convenience for some people, and I appreciate Kent that you're looking for that and trying to improve the city, but at the same time, it's not a safety issue like the path. I daily look at a path through my yard now. I never was actually opposed to the path. I've always agreed with that, had issues about how it'd be done, but I've never opposed the path because safety was a concern. And this is a convenience, there's nothing about safety here.
Great, thank you. Tim?
All right, well, since I moved here in 2000, and I do not live on the lake, I love lakes, I fished this lake when I was a little kid in the early 70s. My birthday was yesterday, I'm 54. But I think it's absurd that we don't have some sort of public access to downtown like ours with all the infrastructure we have in and around the lake in St. John's Park. I always felt that way since I moved here, and I thought that the reconstruction of the dam, when that occurred, one of the primary purposes in that for the design of the pier and that was to get that access. And I was, my wife and I were up to our elbows and kids at the time, and we didn't really, weren't really that involved in city politics, but it turns out that that was one of the initial goals of that infrastructure, was to gain access for boats to moor and get downtown. And the DNR opposed it because it was, there's rules about anchoring to a dam for that purpose. And when this proposal came up, I thought, well, this really, this really should have legs. I mean, and I didn't hear much about it, and I think we probably all should have heard more about it earlier. The fact that it included slips for rentals, I thought there was some seriously inherent problems with that, and that was brought up pretty quickly by some of the residents about, when they dubbed it a marina as opposed to a pier, because that's what it would have been, renting slips to people who would then gather here and maybe meet four or five other people with cars where you're gonna park, and you all meet to go launch a boat and get out on the lake and maybe have trouble starting it. And that seems really unappealing. And it's just lately, very recently, that this proposal morphed into something I think is really reasonable, but I don't think the people in opposition should be, and the people that have it in their backyard, as everyone's saying, should be outvoted. I think they should be brought into the conversation a little bit more and really understand and vet all the concerns and that with the other people that are for it, because I think, I think there would be a big benefit to, you know, "Oh, it's not gonna have a lot of impact if there's only five boats." Well, it's an amenity we don't have now. The city only has one tennis court, and it's used. It's in someone else's backyard, and it's noisy. Like the mayor said, there's a weed cutter that's parked and docked in front of very nice homes like everyone has in the city. And it's not something that they desire to have there, but it's there. And the DNR that defines certain areas as being, "Oh, you can't build this here, you gotta build it over there," or whatever, you know, that's the DNR that runs a boat launch that puts about 4,500 boats on this lake every year that everyone has to deal with, and all the stuff that they turn up as far as weeds and muck and noise and all that. So I'm really torn on this one. Unfortunately, I think there's a lot of good ideas coming late in the process here, and I think more people need to be just brought into the conversation to embrace this as a good idea. I'd hate to see this as another us versus them. We've got a lot of lake versus non-lake, and now we're talking about east side of the lake versus west side of the lake. It's a little silly, and I think we need to get more cohesion here as far as a good plan, because I think it's a good idea, and it may be just a little bit late, but with the money we're talking about, if it's a $30,000 capital expenditure and we can apply with a grant application and have some time to vet the potential, I think it's, I think it's a very remote issue with whether or not St. John's has rights there, but I think that should be vetted out as far as whether or not a dock is gonna appease the supposed ancient right that they have to put a dock in there. But I think that needs to be vetted out, and I think that, you know, the biology, you know, anyways, but I just think that it needs to be a little bit more time to work this out. And I think, I'd love to see it go through, and I don't think that having it be a resolution that we introduce in March or September of next year is too early or too late either. So those are my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to support the motion, but I'm gonna make another one following if the motion succeeds. I think that's the order of things, I don't want to amend this motion.
Sounds good. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, so that's a good question, logistically. This motion is to, because the budget, the way it stands, is still $128,000?
Yes, Wayne's asking to have that removed.
Okay.
And a second.
Jackie made the motion, I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie and Wayne. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that's gonna kind of be a blend of everything that's been said tonight, and I honestly think that this has come too late, and we need to take more time. So I'm gonna, my motion will be to put it in the 2022 budget for 30 grand, and hopefully we'll make a resolution next year to apply for the money. We need to vet out a lot of these things that have been brought up tonight. I would like the Lake Welfare Committee to be the main committee on this, because we're a committee form of government, and see if we can't get some support there on the smaller pier that has been stated at 30 grand net cost to the city.
I'll second.
Great, any discussion?
I'd like to hear the motion again. It is to...
Well, my motion was to go, put it in the capital budget for 2022.
That doesn't really have to be a motion, does it? Just put it in next year when we create the budget.
But it seems that we don't create the budget, the mayor does, so I'm saying we're gonna create the budget here, but we make motions to move it out of here, a lot of stuff. So that's basically my motion. It's based on a lot of stuff that's been presented here, either earlier as a larger document or as this refined idea tonight. Under discussion, my answer to the people on the lake, when they ask if there can be a pier down there, I always say it's complicated. And I will say, when I was mayor, we broached the subject and had similar arguments. I was mayor in the early 90s, and I do agree with the St. John's resolution that was resolved titling on that land, and I do recall it now. I don't think that's in conflict with what we have in mind. I think the DNR will support a pier there because they like public, they like access to water. And so they tend to support subdivision associations or governments, or even individuals who can get more access. So I don't see that as an overall problem, but these things all take time. And I do think the city has to take more time to consider some of these more controversial issues. I know as... I know as painful as it is, I don't wanna re-debate this a year from now and we might end up being, doing that, but I'm hoping we re-debate it next summer under a resolution. But put, put the, put it in for twenty-two, cause you know that's when we're gonna spend the money.
So basically you're asking to have it put in the budget next year, twenty twenty-two, and ask it to be worked on, um-
The small-
By the Lake Welfare Committee, um-
Correct.
Over the following year.
Yep.
Does that help, Wayne? You, you got clarification?
Yep.
Okay.
Andy specified a dollar amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars. And I can tell you if this resolution fails, th- this idea fails, my motion fails tonight, then we know that, where we stand.
I'll second.
Could you please repeat the motion?
My motion is to put thirty thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budget, supporting the modified proposal tonight. Contingent on a DNR grant that we'll apply for next year by resolution. And that the Lake Welfare Committee be the lead committee on referring this back to us for implementation.
Okay, was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Can we go to the DNR and apply for the grant with this potentially approved motion that passes or no?
I need to review the, the details of the application to see if it needs to be an, an approved budget amount or not. It, it would be hard for the council to commit to the matching funds without the funds being budgeted. So I gotta look at that, the detail of that.
I just can't imagine that we can't have a resolution of the council next summer to the DNR that says, look, if you approve, we'll add it to our budget in two thousand twenty-two. I can't imagine that that's unsupportable. In fact, I think that's the way it should work.
That's not how it typically works, but we can pursue that.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three nays, you got the three nays?
Dean, Valdi and Kassen.
Correct.
Great. Uh, abstentions, none, motion passes. All right, next one, you got another one? Wayne?
Hi, do you? Wayne, you can come in?
Phil, is that you?
I, I was, I'll, I'll jump in. Um, I, I would make a motion to, uh, consider withdrawing the bike path going from, well, going west on Oakwood Road. I would, uh, remove that from the budget.
What was the amount on that?
Eighty-five thousand. Is that the eighty-five thousand dollar one, Phil?
That is correct.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I, I think considerable thought needs to be put into the overall bike plans, first of all. I think there may be a less expensive way to A, construct that and B, to maintain it. Secondly, the citizens along that roadway are very concerned about speed. And I think if we, well, I don't think, I will, I've been researching this and if a bike path is added and the roadway looks wider, speeds increase. I think we, we need to do is modify the roadway in fact, uh, to reduce speed by design. And definitely get the bicycles off, they get the pedestrians off, they're def, I do believe that's a need. But the design as is doesn't make much sense. If you can visualize where the Lake Country chiropractic office is now, that is where the bicycle path currently ends. If you wanted to go west on Oakwood right now, you could not according to this bicycle path, you'd have to actually cross north over Oakwood to go west over Highway C and then about a hundred and fifty feet now go south to get you to your original destination. So you'd have to cross over three streets instead of just one. I realize there's a bad hill there. There's also a very bad intersection design. I really don't wanna spend money on the construction of a pathway when that whole intersection is just due for an examination. That, that's, it's a weird, difficult corner to, to maneuver. Maybe it might even be a good candidate for round, I don't know, but, uh, I think other things need to be considered comprehensively before we start putting in a bike path.
I know it's been seconded by Wayne. This is Jackie. I just wanted to say that I agree. I think we did fund, we do have a study that's being done, am I correct? Parks and Rec, Matt, that's you.
Are you asking Jackie if we had a study done?
No, I think it's-
So Public Works is gonna be conducting the study?
Oh, it's Public Works, sorry.
We are waiting for the Park and Rec to complete their five-year plan because that has a trail plan in it and that's gonna be our starting point.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think we, I agree, we should, um, um, there's an old saying, uh, if you aim at nothing, you will hit it. And that's what I'm afraid we're doing. So I, I'm all about paths. I'm a lifelong runner, I love them, and I think we wanna have them as intelligently and co-conferently put together. So I would agree with this motion.
And to be clear, I, I would very much like to see something happen in maybe the twenty twenty-two budget. I just think we need to have that comprehensive plan to know where we're going, just for clarification. Thank you.
And I'll sup, I'll support this motion and I'm a big supporter of paths, but I'm even a bigger supporter of planning. And, uh, so this is our way of putting some teeth into it if we just start rejecting them until we-
Phil, would you consider all, uh, amending your motion to push to twenty twenty-two?
Sure, yes, thank you, Matt.
And the second?
Yes.
Uh, Matt, um-
Then I can support that motion, assuming we'll have our plan done.
Well, thanks, I, I appreciate that. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, um, there's any kind of path that connects my entire district to downtown, I'll support. And I, I'll support, I'd support what's in the budget right now because, um, people walk that way anyway. Um, there's, you know, eleven hundred people that do not have a good way to get to downtown in where I live. Um, sending my girls to Cushing School, I thought when we moved here and, and I always say buyer beware and when people say, well, you know, I moved in next to a gun club or an airport or next to a highway and then complain about the noise, I say, well, shame on you. Well, I didn't think about the fact that my girls live a mile and a half away from the grade school and they couldn't walk downtown to go, go to it. They needed a ride. Um, because one way was to walk through bushes into Cushing Park and the other way was to walk down Highway C with no shoulder on the road. Um, well, they fixed the shoulder on the road with a really, really nice path. And, um, the people are, are walking down there anyways right now through that, it's a very, very awkward intersection at Christ the King. It's, it's off, it's off-centered with, um, the drive that goes across the street there, if you're familiar with it. Um, and I know that that's on the, that's on the bullseye list for Department of Public Works and it's been there for a while. They wanna fix that.
And it has been discussed, not formally on the plan, but everyone says, when are we gonna get to that?
Yeah.
And I know my sense of that committee is they're willing to spend some real money to make that corner right.
Yeah, we do, we do now, we do, we do and we should soon. Uh, I know that we just, we just bought that road for free.
We don't own it, do we?
No, no, I was just gonna say, keep in mind that intersection is county, is a county intersection.
Oh, I thought we, didn't we get it with the ridge?
No, we purposely didn't want it.
We got two Oakwood. Intersection is still a county intersection.
They still wanna study it.
Okay, anyways, um, so that's gonna need some work. That's not gonna happen soon. Um, but the people walking through there and, and to there is, is going to. And that little stretch, um, cut, you know, connects a lot of people to downtown that are walking that anyway. So I'm, I'm pleased to hear that there's support for it, um, given a study and, um, I'm glad to see we'll, we'll take it real serious in a year. So, I agree.
All right, any other discussion?
I would just say that, you know, when I, when we had our discussions out on Oakwood, uh, eighteen months ago and I went door to door, there was, you know, seventy-five, eighty-five percent consensus that this was a good and needed thing. Um, on that road, I appreciate the concerns. Um, but, yeah, Alderman Iker's residents, they need a safe way to get downtown.
I would concur and I would also question, now that, uh, St. John's Golf Course has a new owner, is there an alternative way to totally get them off of the road? From Anderson Avenue North, there's a very commonly used path that already exists, uh, for a lot of pedestrians. I, there's no signage, it's not a public path by any means, but, uh, you know, if the golf course's years are limited, I think we should be considering about, you know, talking to Hendrick's Properties to see if they would be open to that. Um, I think there's a, a way to get them, those, those people that, uh, are on the far northwest side of town totally off the road and keep them into the side neighborhoods. Walking along the, the main streets is not an ideal in the first place. So Anderson Road North comes out to almost the same place where the current path would bend. So that would achieve the same objective.
Yeah, and I've walked that, uh, and that's, that's a, a good and reasonable point and I've walked that area and with new ownership, um, that's, that's a possibility, although it, you know, you might be delaying this project and delaying this access two, three, four, or five years. Um, but it's, it might be more cost-effective, it might be less impact on folks' front yards. Um, so I, I, I can see the, the, the benefits of that.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna support both because the reality is that a good plan will allow us to get both in a logical way. And that when you have, and, and you're now referencing only one parcel, what we wanna do is come up with a plan that takes care of every parcel that's undeveloped in the city and put our side of the deal in on, on, on these necessary roads, which this is one. It's just, it needs to be integrated into an overall plan because if it is, then hate to pick on the poor folks that come in and say, I don't want it in front of me. At that point, you can't say it anymore because we have, will have developed something county, citywide. It could be integrated into county stuff too, but, but that's what I'm advocating is that we spend the money and the time and make a plan. But in the end, some people may be disappointed with our plan. But certainly any undeveloped areas will have to make their contribution.
Okay, somebody wanna restate the motion, please? Are we all good?
It's not my motion.
I believe the motion is to remove the project from the twenty twenty-one budget and put it in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Yep. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. What's next?
I'll just make a comment on, I don't remember, is it, the, what is it? The top of page one twelve, we have a lot of information about a bucket truck and a diesel engine. I just wanna see more information about why a new truck is gonna last forever and not why a old one is dead. But I'm in favor of leaving that in the budget for the bucket truck.
I'll make a motion to pass the balance of the capital budget.
I'll second.
There you go. Discussion?
Could you please repeat this, the motion?
I made a motion to, to pass the balance of the capital budget.
And it was seconded.
I was just gonna say, is everybody sure? Because last year we had a few projects forgotten about and we had to do a couple amendments in the weeks following the approval.
Do you need to add, Danny?
Nope.
What's in here that's missing?
Oh, I know that I had just a couple of concerns and they've been addressed. So, um, I don't know about anybody else.
Just give me a second here. I might pull against my own budget.
Yep, take a look through.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, onto the operating budget.
So now, would it be easier to take a motion?
Well, usually, as time-
Which one are we, we're gonna vote on, the one I guess is assumed or referenda passed?
Right, Budget A.
Budget A. And then have people amend it.
There you go.
That, that's how we've typically done it in the past.
So I'll make a motion to budget, to, to pass. Budget A is approved by the citizens in the referendum.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. So I just had one thing I wanted to float out there, since there seemed to be some issues about, um, where we were gonna put the ice rink and how we were gonna use the ice rink. Maybe we might consider being the highest use of city labor, um, uh, as a single item. I believe the number's three hundred and seventy-one hours we use to move, set up and maintain and take down the ice rink. That we might defer that, uh, use for one year and have those three hundred and seventy-one hours, um, which in talking to Paul said that's what he would do with the hours if the hours became available, uh, to catch up on this long list of tree cutting that we're behind. So something to consider. Um, I thought it was a, a good suggestion, I mean, that, that we would talk about.
You know, the concern I have is what does our Park and Rec committee think? Some of this stuff, I think we, as a council, we frustrate them if we make decisions without consulting. And I'm a committee, I'm a big committee form of government guy, I hate to say this.
Yeah.
And it frustrates them if all of a sudden, oh, they're not doing this.
Yeah.
Now, I, I, I do, I wonder that the ice rink, because we certainly mentioned it in the referendum, these are things that are kinda nice to haves.
Okay.
But there's a lot of people expecting that thing to be sitting out there this year. I think we'll have, if we had moved it, we're gonna hear some complaining. So.
Sounds good, just an idea to try to catch up on the tree cutting.
My idea would be go back to Park and Rec and say, is it still, is that a high priority? Or since you were thinking about moving it, is it, do we take it away for a year and see who complains? And oh, by the way, we have plenty of work. We, you know, it's just a thought, but I guess I wouldn't advocate us just changing it.
Okay.
And now.
Sounds good.
I mean, you could put it on their next agenda and ask.
Well, the phase one of putting the rink up is, is scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay, so there's your, you know-
They're waiting for tonight's meeting.
I think they should rest up because they're putting it up, right?
Well, I, the one thi, so I, I, I made a motion, I know everyone's waiting for amendments, but you have a memo talking about modifying the budget in some manner this year beyond what the referendum said, so I, I assume I just won't move to spend all the money authorized. So this is Jim Barron talking to Tom for the two that are not.
So that's why I wondered, you, you mentioned approving, um, the budget as, as, as approved by the referendum, so you're talking about, um, levying the full two hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eight dollars above the city's levy limit?
Uh, correct, that's the start. But you would, you have a memo in our packet talking about something less.
Yeah, so, so the Budget A, uh, as proposed, um, uh, it recommended, I think the number is roughly about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, is, is the amount that we needed above our, um, uh, levy limit without the referendum. So we didn't need the full two fifty-seven six oh eight this year.
Okay.
That's largely because the police department is not looking at filling the open officer position, uh, until June one. Um, but, uh, there was one minor technicality in that, um, the excessive, um, taxation claim that we had to pay to Walmart, um, the amount that we had to pay, uh, for one year only, we can add that to our, um, levy limit. So we just found out about that here in the last couple of weeks. Um, so we can add roughly about four thousand dollars to our levy limit, uh, and therefore, um, instead of needing about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, over our, uh, levy limit amount without the referendum, now we only need roughly about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. I get that about right, Amy?
Yeah.
And Amy can give you the exact number if you wanna find that. And Amy can give you the exact number if you want to find out to the dollar.
So then that is my motion.
Which one?
The 187.
Amy, what's the exact number, the 180?
186,797, and that's to balance.
Okay, that's the balance of budget, yeah.
Okay. And then in that memo, we did mention that the council may want to consider levying some additional amount of the difference between what we need and the 257,608 to provide for some budget flexibility in the coming years. Or you can simply levy the amount needed for, as, exactly as needed in the budget. And you're proposing the 180?
Correct, correct. And I told people that asked me about this that we asked for the amount, but we still talked between us that we would only levy what we needed.
Yep.
And I know that may hurt us in the long run because it establishes a new floor, I take it.
Yep.
Or that becomes the ceiling.
No, it doesn't really establish a floor or a ceiling. Each of the next five years, we'll go back and calculate our levy limit without the referendum first, and then we add the 257,608. So we're not reestablishing any floor or ceiling each year right now.
That's a good answer.
Yep.
So for clarification, we just have this amount available every year. If we don't need it, we don't take it.
I agree with all, I mean, that's exactly how we represented it as well, and I think that's prudent to people on. We didn't get a, we didn't get a credit limit expecting to peg it if we didn't have to. One concern I have though, so it's on page 69, and maybe Amy, you can help me out with this, is on the budget amount for revenues. Maybe, maybe I'm not in the right place, or maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but we might be a little, I'm concerned we might be optimistic about a revenue on like fish hatchery rental and what else do we have here? That one, that one kind of stood out to me in that what we're realizing or estimating for 2020 is 10,000 out of our budget amount of 25,000. I read that right, and our 2021 budget has $25,000 in there?
Yeah.
And I just, I don't know that, I think that might be a little optimistic, so we might want to adjust our budget amount to reflect what we think would be conservative for the, for that $15,000 delta between 2020 budget and the 2020 actual. Presuming that, that we're not gonna just be, you know, hitting home runs all next year, then that COVID might still have a lasting impact, we might want to adjust that to $15,000. And that would just increase the levy amount by $10,000 there, just so we don't, just so, you know, we're not moving money around someplace else.
Point of order, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along here. I think that either, either it's getting really garbly or the topic is moving pretty quickly and not on the same thing. If I remember, if I heard right, it started off with a question from Jim regarding the ice rink, and somehow on the budget, and I have not been able to follow where you are, could you please recap that for me?
So.
Well, I'll recap.
Jim made a motion.
Or not.
You need to go back to there, Phil, or?
We had a discussion about the ice rink and the hours that are going to be expended, which will start tomorrow, and the mayor was suggesting maybe we just not put the ice rink up this year and reallocate those hours, say, to tree cutting that we know needs to be done. I kind of objected to us doing it at this stage because we have a Park and Rec Committee that kind of owns that function, and I think we need to use our committees. We could go to them next month and ask, but the thing is already going to be half up, so.
Yeah.
I think it frustrates our committees if this committee, this council just makes unilateral decisions without telling them, so.
So then we started talking about the numbers of the budget.
Then we went into just the general budget discussion.
And the last number that we have, Amy, that was in the motion, is what?
186,797.
Okay, you got that, Phil?
What was the last thing that was stated, was that Jack?
186,797 is always.
186,797.
That's the amount of the referendum dollars that we would need to use for the budget right now.
So you got that number, Phil?
Yeah, so you're currently referencing the motion for consideration, is that my understanding?
The motion was to pass the whole budget as a balanced budget and use that amount of the referendum. Then what we are considering is any individual motions to modify the, the first one, and the way we had left it is Alderman Iker had questioned the revenue in the fish hatchery building, and.
Being too optimistic.
Maybe it's too optimistic, so we should adjust the levy accordingly.
Add an additional $10,000.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, I'll make an, a motion to increase the levy amount by $10,000 due to subtracting the projected revenue from the fish hatchery from 25,000 to 15,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Actually, so Tim, can you just recap that motion for me on what that's gonna do? That's, you're talking about adding?
Yeah, so I'm suggesting we're not gonna get $25,000 in rental fees from the fish hatchery, we're expecting 10 this year, and I'm suggesting that relatively conservative and a little bit optimistic, we'll get 15 next year as COVID lifts.
Okay.
So that negatively impacts the budget by 10 grand, so I'm suggesting that our operating budget needs to be increased by $10,000.
Okay. So I just, I'm sorry, I have to clarify because I'm not sure why it's getting worse, but.
No, please do.
The motion, the motion for consideration that was put in there by Tom and by Administrator Buchanan, or Treasurer, sorry Buchanan.
Amy?
Amy, Amy Buchanan, sorry. Has that been referred to? Is that what you're discussing at this point? Because.
Yeah, so basically there was a motion for $198,000 in the number Amy mentioned, okay? And now we're making amendments to that number. That, that hasn't been approved, it's, we're making amendments to it, and then we will pass in one motion the final number along with the, after we do the amendments, which we'll vote on individually, then we will vote on the final number, which was the original motion. Does that help? So right now.
I think so, and just for clarification purposes, what we're discussing at the time, I apologize, I'm not sure, it's just not a good community.
No, no, it's hard when you're out there, trust me.
So, thank you, appreciate the understanding. We were authorized by the community to levy a 4.011 amount, and that would be for $257,608, and $608 actually. And we're discussing not collecting all of the authorized amount, but instead working off the amount Amy had suggested in the motion for consideration, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's where I got confused, is we're just gonna try and piecemeal on things to the amount Amy had suggested.
Yeah, the number Amy's suggesting is a balanced budget.
Yes, I, we've been authorized by the people.
To spend more.
If I'm out of, if I'm out of terms, it's correct. We've been authorized by the people of the city of Delafield to increase the levy up to $257,000 with a few actually. I think the current budget does not have any fixes in it to get us out of a deficit situation, and I think within five years' time is, I think that's what Tim was saying, is a bit optimistic. I'm, I think I might have missed the motion here, missed the opportunity, but I think we need to levy what the citizens have allowed us to because it comes out to about $20 per household. What we're talking about, if we go with Amy Buchanan's recommendation, it's a difference of about $20, $25 per household. I also think we could be here a long time just trying to itemize things to add on. The ballot budget actually said, shall the city of Delafield be allowed to exceed this limit and increase the levy for the next fiscal year? Doesn't say up to, I think we need to take advantage of that because if we're being overly optimistic, we're gonna be back in the same situation in five years. If we take the entire levy that's, that's been allowed, that would at least buy us year six and seven because we, I still haven't seen a plan for getting us out of a deficit on an annual basis.
Well, I would just ask you, consider that we can also grow the revenue line through new construction, and that is certainly an objective that we're trying to accomplish to help balance the other side of the equation.
As a, as a point of order, could he just, I mean, he's making a good argument to vote against my motion, so that's good, we can.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
So let's move on.
Yep.
He's really making an argument to vote against the original motion, not just your.
I get it, I get it, but we're going, that's right.
Yep.
So that's, can be saved.
But you're all clear on what numbers we got and where we're voting, right, Phil?
We might end up at his number.
Did you make a motion on that?
I made a motion.
And we got a second.
Yeah.
And Phil had some questions, so. All right, is there any other discussion on the motion, the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Tensions passes. Okay, I had a note here, Tom, on page 72 about travel expenses. Is this something we might be able to reduce because the likelihood of attending some of these things is not going to happen? It's at $7,600. You know, is that reasonable to cut that in half?
But the, most of the travel's been taken out.
Yeah, we went from Fort, we went from.
Yeah, out of that $7,600, about, I think $5,600 is tuition reimbursement.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Is that, am I missing that on the line item? I didn't see tuition reimbursement in there. I thought, I see Ellers Conference, GFOA Conference.
It's the last one.
Oh, the last one, okay, so that, so those other, some of them have lines through them, like we're not including them, but, so those don't, so we're, that is, okay, for in summary, the 7,600 is, how much of it's tuition reimbursement?
5,600.
5,600.
For example, like a national ICMA conference is typically in that line item, but that's been removed for next year.
Okay, but we still plan on doing these other events that you have listed here?
Yeah, a lot of these are, a lot of these are local, and if they don't go on in person, they're likely to happen virtually.
Virtually, okay. And there's not much in the mileage of meals reimbursement?
Like I said, of the 7,600, 5,600 is tuition reimbursement.
Okay. Doesn't even sound like we can get $1,000 out of there.
Yeah, if you're interested in any, any of the individual line items, Amy could get those to you. You've got that file available, Amy?
Yep.
Interested in any of the subtotal item numbers?
I mean, unless Amy, you tell me there's some thing in there for $2,000 for one item, I think I'm good.
Nope, 800 is the most mileage of meal reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make a general comment that during the budget session that we had, where we had the different options with and without a referendum, I think it was, everyone came prepared, the department heads came prepared with budgets that eliminated anything that could be, that I could see as discretionary spending, and, and we were looking at employees as the last resort, and I think that's where we stand. I'm having a hard time pulling a thread on this budget to find anything other than a flaw in an optimistic outlook on revenue, so I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to add anything else as far as changes, but maybe support when a light bulb goes on here with someone else.
Anybody on Skype have anything? Otherwise I might be looking to call the question, or Zoom. I use Skype at work.
I'm good.
And I'll say to the general, general point about, I totally get Phil's, Alderman Kason's point on what we're doing today to prevent an issue five years from now, but I think the answer isn't just what occurred, and that is not spending money we don't have to, not borrowing money today that we don't need, but, or taking it from the citizens, letting them do what they think is best with the money, and if, if we approach them with a reasonable question about the level of service they're getting from the city and what's being provided to them, and we need more money in five years, or we don't have to raise taxes in five years, I think, well, we should be, it should be reasonable, expect a reasonable response at the polls again, and so I'm all good with not spending more today if we don't need it, even though we are authorized to do it.
I think if we're good stewards, we can go back and ask the same question and feel that we probably will succeed again.
Well, I can tell you, it's my personal admission that we don't need to go back and ask the same question.
I get it, I get it.
You need to, no, we agree on this.
Okay.
Is there, yeah, so what's the current motion?
The, what is the total?
So the original motion was to pass the budget as proposed, which would require the use of $186,797,000 of the funds approved by referendum. There was one amendment made to that to reduce revenue by $10,000. Therefore, the current motion would be to utilize $196,797 of the referendum funds for 2021.
So, follow up question, just to clarify, there was a note on tuition reimbursement? Is that satisfied, is that concern satisfied in the current motion?
It is.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say.
Whoa, can I interject there, sorry. We are, at current, so, I apologize, we are currently adding on to the dollar amount, and we are now about to vote on the final amount, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I would like to make an amendment then of adding $3,000 for the purpose of increased spending on committees and meetings. I would like to see the CDA committee actually start to meet so that we can actually address the development issues. Currently, they have not been meeting, and if they start meeting, that will cost at least another thousand, maybe two per year.
Community development?
This is the Community Development Authority?
Correct.
Yeah, Tom, you want to talk about what that committee does and what, why they meet as they do?
Yeah, so Community Development Authority, that committee was created for, for one purpose, one purpose only. The city has the ability to extend what's called conduit bonds, conduit borrowing to certain institutions within the city. It allows institutions to borrow at the city's rate of borrowing with our credit rating, but the city doesn't inherit any of the liability that goes along with it, and we, we did that for St. John's Northwest Military Academy, and that's, was the purpose of the Community Development Authority coming together. So they met once to approve that in the first place, and they've met once since then to approve a refinancing of those bonds. So I believe they've met twice in their existence, which has probably been, probably close to 10 years now, something like that.
So what would prohibit that committee from meeting pro bono? Do we need a dollar amount tied to that committee for the, for the wage, for the wages of the committee members necessarily, or can that committee meet as agreed to by the committee?
Well, the city does.
Without that financial allocation.
Well, two things, Matt. First of all, the city does provide the opportunity for committee members to receive $40 per meeting. meeting.
Right. But they don't necessarily have to receive it to meet, correct?
Right, some people choose not to receive it.
So the committee could still meet without the members being paid, if they chose to?
Well, there's currently vacancies.
If the members agreed to that. But then the other thing would be to look at the purpose of the committee, and making sure that whatever they're interested in meeting on is within the purpose of why they exist.
And right now, they're meeting to accomplish the purpose for why they exist?
I don't know why they would be meeting that.
Well, I've been on that committee, so I can confirm what Tom just said. When it was created, there was sensitivity to the fact that this city was not going to get into the business of promoting development with money. And, I mean, we have this discussion all the time about whether we're chasing growth like Oconomowoc or not. I'm not picking on Oconomowoc, but at the time, we said the purpose was to take care of St. John's, and I know, I guess that's the way it stood.
Well, that's not what's written on our website for what the purpose of the committee is for.
The Community Development Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
The purpose of the CDA is to eliminate and prevent substandard deterioration, unsanitary and blight areas within the city, provide and retain gainful employment opportunities for citizens of the city, provide affordable housing in the city, encourage growth in the city's tax base, and stimulate the flow of investment capital into the city's beneficial effects upon this economy and the city. It's not one thing it's for, it's pursuant, and that's a statute that's created by Wisconsin statute 661335. So there's more purpose to that committee that isn't being utilized.
Then we can change, we can make a resolution to change that without spending three grand, is my point, because I'm just, I'm curious, I'm curious how this committee's gonna... Spending three grand's gonna get us three grand, I don't know. I mean, I'd love to hear more about it, but I don't see it happening.
Well, you have a motion, and now that we talked it, it's been seconded, so we can vote on that.
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to see this, you know, Wayne raises a reasonable point, there's no harm, and Phil as well, there's no harm in allowing this committee to meet and see what good and benefit comes of it, but to Alderman Iker's point, I agree, we don't have to spend three grand necessarily to see that happen.
True, but...
Am I wrong in that, am I wrong in that assumption? Assertion?
We don't have to spend it, but it's there. I really think that we need to get a professional development plan, because I haven't seen one for the city. I know that's the way out of the hole, and to develop a balanced budget without a deficit and rebuild our fund balance, but at the same time, I think we need to look comprehensively at the whole city. We've got a gas station on I-94 and Highway 83 that's a real eyesore. Now, there's a Perkins right across the street. Are we looking at real opportunities? I think there's a couple open shops at Kitty Corner next to the Dollar Tree, so are we using, are we making plans? Are we doing enough to encourage growth in a responsible way? I would like to see more of that happen.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that assertion, I'm just saying, do we need to allocate $3,000 to do it? Can't we just, can't we just start meeting and go from there?
Well, if they're on the committee, whether they're on the committee now, or these vacancies are filled, I would feel much more comfortable having the $3,000, just knowing it's available. If we don't have to spend it, great, but I would like to make sure it's available, because it would be a hard thing to go back and find the money later on. We need to start looking at developing and getting outside help, and we have to have honest, good, forward-thinking discussions.
What are we spending? And I agree with that sentiment, but we're also, we also have, what is it, $24,000? Somebody will have to refresh my memory. $24,000 with Waukesha.
The Waukees economic development?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Isn't that an allocation of $24,000?
No, that's $4,000 in the operating budget.
I'm sure it's four.
And in the, you might be referring to in the capital budget, we've got, combined with a budget item from last year, we've got a total of $26,000 in for a downtown development plan.
That's all, that's the downtown development plan. So, I may have missed the opportunity in the capital budget there to suggest something there. That's ultimately where I'm going, because actually, that was gonna be my next request, is that we look at that differently. How can we get a comprehensive plan? We might, I don't know that $24,000 all covers enough, because that's just, it states for downtown, and it's gotta be larger than that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and is there any other discussion on this motion?
So that would bring the total back up to $199,797, if you approve his motion, which still keeps us well under the $257,000. So, I would say, go for it, put it in there, doesn't mean we have to spend it, right?
Well, I just don't, I don't like allocating money, I don't understand how it's gonna be spent, for what purpose.
Well, certainly, there's opportunity that some of the members would want their $40 typed in for the meetings, and that's not included in the current operating budget. But, it's not gonna amount to $3,000.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather have some more discussions on that as a council to understand what we think we're gonna do with that. I mean, happy to have that discussion.
Phil, do you have ideas on what the $3,000 might be used for? Would be used for having an engineer put together some maps and things like that, or planner put together some maps and things, or...
That is correct. My first intention was to pay for the $40 per committee member, because they may or may not be willing to give back to the city. I don't wanna be presumptive on that point. And secondly, to get just what you identified there, outside references, maps, something to get this whole thing jumpstarted with developing a development plan. We have the 2030 development plan to know, but that's 10 years out. I think we need to look closer to home, look in a more timely fashion what's going on now. So, yes, by purchasing maps or getting other ideas, talking to SEH, whatever it might be.
That's a pretty reasonable number, though.
I mean, if we all understand what we're gonna, you know, spend it on, and Phil, you don't think this is a duplication of what we're doing with the total of $24,000 that we'll have going into the next year for the consultant that the city planner's been working on? You think this would be in addition to that?
Yes, I do not think that's a duplication, because that plan of $24,000 is designated for just the downtown area.
And his point is, the CDA committee would be working the entire city, not just the downtown area.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, just so you know, I mean, the $24,000, it is the downtown development plan, but it's not like it would exclude the other areas, just so you're aware.
$26,000.
$26,000. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, do you have who the ayes were?
Dean and Kason.
Okay.
Pardon me?
I have Dean and Kason, and you as the two yeses, and then all the rest are no's.
Okay, motion fails.
To add your $3,000.
Okay. I'm a yes, yes.
Do you have another one, Phil?
No.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion on the capital budget, or the operating budget? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions passes. Great. Okay, we are on to be the vouchers.
We're trying to pass the voucher list.
Second.
They're in a hurry now. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Updated Administrator, a one.
Yeah, as far as the Nagawicka Road Path Project, the southern portion of the project has been paved, that's the portion in between Oakwood Road and Zastro Drive. We are still waiting for We Energies to move their poles out of the way for the northern portion. They've got the new poles in place, they've got their facilities moved onto the new poles, they're waiting for Spectrum to move their facilities onto the new poles, which is expected to occur tomorrow evening. There'll be a brief outage that the people have been made aware of along Nagawicka Road, expected to be an hour or two overnight while Spectrum switches over their facilities, and then after that, always will be able to pave the remainder of the project, and they hope to get that paving done before Thanksgiving.
Great, thank you. Clerk?
In the interest of time, I'll try to make this quick, and I actually wrote up a memo that I didn't get done in time for the packet, so I'll just email it out to everyone, but in short, the election went pretty well. We had 93.1% turnout of the estimated voting age population, which is how the state usually figures out their total turnout. The state's turnout was 72.3%, so we did very, very well. We had a lot of absentee ballots, 3,500 plus, and 1,550 in-person absentee voters the two weeks before the election, and 1,537 at the polls. So we actually had more absentees than we had in-person voters, which is to be expected. 171 election day registrations, about a quarter of the amount as previous big elections, and I think that's mainly because the MyVote website is now getting out there, so people are registering well in advance, which is great. In comparison, the 2016 presidential election, there was an 82.4% turnout, and the 2018 gubernatorial election, there was a 77.4% turnout. Aside from that, the in-person absentee process that we had the two weeks before the election, I got positive reviews about the layout and everything. I know a couple of you took advantage of that. Some observations I had for my first election here at Delafield, being the presidential, being that I came from a very large city, it was very quiet to me, so there wasn't a lot of complaints, I didn't get a lot of media, a lot of voters call and talk, anything, really, until after the election, obviously. So, my observation, there was like 200 people in line, probably more than that, right away in the morning, it was pretty steady through about 3:00 PM, and then it was kind of a ghost town the rest of the day. That's when the vast majority of the people came in to vote. I did hear a couple line inequity complaints due to the alpha split of the poll books, and with COVID, I was trying to make it so people weren't passing each other, but they ended up going down the line and grabbing people whose last name ended with N to bring them up front. Hopefully, with the electronic poll books down the road, that kind of stuff will be taken care of. We did have two provisional ballots, my understanding, the very first two provisional ballots, and that's because people didn't have adequate IDs, so they got a provisional ballot, one of them ended up coming back, so his ballot was counted. And we did have one presidential-only ballot, and that's people who just moved from Wisconsin to the state within the 28-day period, so they are still eligible to vote, but only for president. So, I think that was probably one of the first times, and like I said, overall, it was fairly quiet. The chiefs did mistake what I told them to start with the next day, because we pre-numbered the absentee ballots, so there was a gap of 440 numbers. I don't know if a constituent ever calls you to ask, that's what the issue was. We did have the same amount of numbers that we used, and the ballots that went through the machine, it's just there was a gap of 440 numbers, so in case you hear about it, I can explain more if you need to, it was properly documented in the appropriate locations. But I will be coming back, look for some proposals for me, I'd like to actually do central count, even though we have one polling site here, it would help to have a separate location handle all of the absentee ballots, it would reduce these number issues that we have, some of the quantity of people that we have up there, especially, we had about six to eight poll workers in that location working on absentee ballots. I'd like to get them out of there, bring them here, space the people out, so in general, that's my report.
Great, thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, ran well. All right, number 11, adjournment, seeing no further business, we are adjourned at 9:24.